My name is Congressman Gentile. I'm going to be representative for this, the 13th Middlesex District. And I welcome you all here tonight. In the last century, the United States was looking at economic ruin. Franklin Roosevelt gave us the New Deal. And now a greater challenge confronts us with climate change. And the Green New Deal promises to lead us to a successful future. So I'd like to introduce Representative Danielle Dragwah.
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. My name is Danielle Dragwah, and I am the state representative for the 4th Middlesex District encompassing the name of Marlboro and the towns of Norfolk and West. I have technical difficulties, but we do. So I'm really excited to be here tonight with all of you to hear from Congresswoman Clark and Senator Markey about the great work that they're doing on climate change. Because we know that the future of our nation and our world depends on what we do today and tomorrow to fix our planet. And I'm also proud to be here with Senator Markey because as some of you may know, last year Massachusetts passed a groundbreaking nation-leading Alzheimer's bill, which is going to impact the health of hundreds of thousands of people across the Commonwealth. And Senator Markey is doing that work in Washington. So I'm really proud to partner with him on that, and I'm proud to be with him here this evening. I'm proud to call him my friend. I'm proud to call him my United States Senator, and I can't wait to hear what he has to say and tell us about all the good work he's been doing. But in the meantime, I'm going to introduce to you my friend, Representative Carolyn Dykema.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carolyn Dykema, State Representative, representing four communities here in Metro West, Holliston, Hopkinton, South Grove, and West Grove. And wow, what a crowd. I think it speaks volumes that we are here in the middle of August, in the summer, and we've got a beautiful full auditorium here on the issue of climate change and to hear from our esteemed U.S. Senator Ed Markey about how he is going to champion and has been championing the cause of climate change in Congress for a long time, and in fact, longer than a lot of people have been talking about it. In Massachusetts, we are doing a lot of work on climate change in the state legislature. But we know that we can't solve the climate issues here in Massachusetts alone. We know that we all need to be rolling together as a country, every state doing their part. And we can't do that without leadership and representation in the U.S. Senate and in Congress to help us do that. And we're so grateful to be here in Massachusetts with Senator Markey, with Congresswoman Catherine Clark, who we never have to doubt where they are on these issues that are generational, that are going to impact every generation from here on out, whether you are a young person, a parent, a grandparent, we all have a stake in this. And we're fortunate that we have such a champion on our side. So I'm going to now introduce my great colleague in the Massachusetts House, David Linsky.
Good evening, everyone. I represent the towns of Natick, Sherburne, and Millis. I'm honored to be here with all of you here today to hear from Congresswoman Catherine Clark and Senator Ed Markey on the issue of climate change. At the State House, there is no issue that I hear more often via phone call, via letter, via postcard, via email than about solving the issues of climate change. Thankfully, we have two people representing us here in Massachusetts in Senator Ed Markey and Congresswoman Catherine Clark, who are committed to solving that crisis and are working hard to do it. I am thrilled that they have sponsored the Green New Deal. I have worked very, very closely with them on an issue near and dear to my heart, that is preventing gun violence. And both Senator Markey and Congresswoman Clark have been national leaders in that. They are national leaders in so many areas, including climate change. I'm thrilled to be here, and I'm thrilled that there are so many people from Metro West that are here today. It's my honor to turn it over now to my friend and my colleague, Senator Becca Roush from Natick.
Good evening, everyone. It is such a pleasure to see such an incredibly packed house. I am so privileged to represent the 12 municipalities of the Norfolk, Bristol, and Middlesex District. Here we go. Wayland, Natick, Wellesley, Natick, Sherburne, Millis, Norfolk, Franklin, Brenton, Plainfield, North Attleboro, and Attleboro, all the way up to the Rhode Island border. I am particularly pleased to be here tonight to hear from Congresswoman Clark and Senator Markey, and especially honored to partner with the Senator at the state level and also with the great representative from Framingham, Maria Robinson, to work on climate change legislation right here in our state legislature in Massachusetts. We have a bill on large building energy standards that has already passed successfully out of committee and is moving its way through. And I'm so thrilled to be that partner as we work hard diligently all the time to ensure that all of the generations that come after us have clean air to breathe and clean water to drink. It is now my distinct honor and privilege to introduce you to my dear friend and close colleague in the Senate, Senator J.B. Eldridge.
Thank you so much, Senator. Good evening, everyone. State Senator J.B. Eldridge, Senator for the Middlesex and Worcester District. And this is a terrific, incredible turnout on a humid August night. So I want to thank everybody for coming. I am so honored to participate in U.S. Senator Markey and Congresswoman Catherine Clark's Green New Deal Town Hall meeting. And looking out, I know that a number of people here were at a Green New Deal Town Hall meeting that I held in my district, the town of Hudson, several months ago. And we also had an overall turnout in that. It's clearly the generational existential issue right now, and U.S. Senator Markey really has been the leader on climate change issues, not only during his time as a U.S. Senator, but throughout his tenure as a United States Congressman. He actually was the only Congressman to pass a climate change bill during the Obama years. So he really has been a leader on this issue. Someone I look to, to advocate for legislation, including the bill that I proudly sent, 100% renewable energy. So I'm looking forward to your questions for the Congresswoman and U.S. Senator Markey. Thanks again for coming, and it's my pleasure to introduce someone that I've worked very closely on criminal justice reform issues, Middlesex District Attorney Mary Ryan. Thank you.
I'm delighted to be here with you tonight. And I think before we begin this program, think about three things. First is, you know, we all hear a lot of crazy things coming about out of our government now. But think about what you have brought to elected office in this city, in this area, on the statewide level, and in Congress. Think about the people who come out here tonight to talk to you about the work that's been going on here. I suggest to you who have chosen well, and people that care about what you care about and represent you best. And secondly, think about what we all know. Despite some tweets out there saying climate change is not real, we don't have to look very far to the 100-degree temperatures, the funnel clouds, the all sorts of weather to know that climate change is real. Massachusetts has known that for a long time. Ed Markey has known that for a long time, and hasn't just known it, but has put his expertise to work on this issue. And then, think about what you know in your own life. Every important undertaking you have ever been successful in. I would suggest to you, it is unlikely that you did that alone. You do that in partnership. And we are very fortunate here, particularly in Middlesex County, but in Massachusetts, to have wonderful partners on so many issues, whether it's criminal justice, whether it's dealing with the oil and gas crisis, whether it is looking at this challenge of climate change. And you're fortunate to have here tonight two folks who could not be better partners. As district attorney, when you look at these issues and you look to Washington, you never reach out to Senator Markey, but the answer of will you help is not a resounding yes. And it's not yes, and I'll send someone. It's yes, and when can I be there? He's there on a Sunday afternoon, sitting in a drug rehabilitation center. He's there early in the morning, meeting with doctors to talk about how we best address the oil and gas issue, here tonight with this wonderful crowd in the middle of the summer, to talk about what we should be doing about climate change. And the same is true with Representative Clark. We have wonderful, wonderful partners. It is not an accident that our level of success is so high. So I'm looking forward to tonight. I'm proud to be here with Senator Markey and Congresswoman Clark, and happy to join with all of you as we discuss this important issue. And it's my pleasure to introduce to you another great partner, my friend, my colleague, Representative Robinson from Framingham.
I'm a terrible liar, so I have to take a picture of all of you, because this is wild from up here. So everybody smile. And also, maybe you've heard since I was fixed that. This is unbelievable. Thank you so much. I may have broken it. It's fine. Hold on. Oh, no. I think I got it. See? Like, everything in life, you just need to turn it back on again. Thank you so much for coming out to Framingham today. It is delightful to have all of you here in this extremely warm room, but talking about something wonderfully stimulating, so I promise that you won't fall asleep while we're out of here. For those of you who know me, I spent 10 years working in the renewable energy industry, working on climate change. It is the biggest cause of my life, and in large part, that's because of Ed Markey. When I was in college, I had the opportunity to intern for a gentleman that now people know about. His name is Jay Inslee. You might have heard of him. He's got glasses, and apparently, and he is very attractive besides glasses now. It's hilarious. And he sat on two committees, Energy and Commerce, and the Global Warming Committees in Congress. And I had the opportunity to stand among the Global Warming Committee, where the chair was none other than then-Representative Markey. And I just was completely amazed by the incredible amount of work that he was doing back in 2007, when this was still an incredibly important issue, but maybe not the global crisis that is today. And he talked about it, the urgency that it needed to be discussed. We were talking about plug-in hydroelectric vehicles back in 2007, and trying to get people on board with that, and we're still getting there today. So I am thrilled to be able to be in this room tonight with all of you. For those who have heard me talk before, my husband and I chose to live in Framingham because we were a bunch of engineering men to put together a spreadsheet of 300 different things of what we wanted from a place where we want to live. One of the things that I chose at the time was making sure that I lived in the 5th Congressional District to be represented at that point in time by Representative Markey. And now I'm utterly thrilled to be represented by Catherine Clark as well. So I'm going to turn this over to the wonderful Mayor of Framingham, Yvonne Spicer, who's going to communicate this off.
I just cannot say enough about Catherine Clark and Senator Markey for their dedication and commitment to being here, to share some ideas on the Green New Deal, but more importantly, for being a partner, being a partner here at Metro West. I know for the city of Framingham, we don't lose sight of the fact that our environment is extremely important to us. We don't lose sight of the fact that we have to leave a world for our children that isn't better than it is now. We don't lose sight of the fact that we have champions in Washington that will not stop, that will not quit until change comes to us in the United States of America. And I am so proud those leaders represent us right here in the 5th Congressional District. I know that Senator Markey and I, or people are going to start to talk about us because we keep spending a lot of time together. I was proud to have him by my side on Sunday advocating for gun rights and making sure And just as he is working so hard, and so is our Congresswoman Catherine Clark. She's not afraid to tackle the issues, the tough issues, whether it be climate change, whether it be race relations, whether it be gun control, she's not afraid to step up to the plate. And I am very proud to call her my Congresswoman. And without further ado, I would introduce to you our Congresswoman, the 5th Congressional District Congresswoman Catherine Clark.
Oh, my goodness, we cannot thank you enough for coming out on an August night at the end of summer. I know many of you are getting ready for back to school, but this couldn't be a more important issue, and we are delighted to have you here today. And I want to thank Mayor Spicer for her work, for her kind words, for all she does in Framingham. I'm going to move this mic, because I think it's interfering. And to all the representatives and senators who came today, and our DA, Mary Ann Ryan, for being here, for being such partners on this work and on so many other issues. Your leadership at the local and state level is how we are going to build the resiliency of our communities. It is how we are going to build a green economy that works for everyone. And these partnerships couldn't be more crucial. It wasn't very long ago that I was a freshman on the Science and Technology Committee in Congress. And people asked me, what surprised you when you went to Congress? And I can tell you, I was surprised at the questions that were being asked. I often wanted to ask my colleagues if they knew that their microphone was really on. Because the anti-science, the seemingly willful ignorance about what is at stake for our planet, what is needed to build a green economy, what we have to invest in research to make sure that we can find the solutions to address climate change and build strong, resilient communities. And it's a new day in the House of Representatives in Congress. With the Democrats in the majority, we believe in science, we believe in being proactive, and we believe in climate change and creating the solutions to address it. In the first eight months that we have been in the majority, we have had over 20 hearings. We've formed the Select Committee on Climate Change. We are using the legislative levers at our disposal, including on the Appropriations Committee where I sit, to invest in research and development, to put us on the road to making the Green New Deal a reality. And in April, House Democrats stood together to pass the Climate Action Now Act that requires the President to develop and update annually a plan for the United States to meet the standards in the Paris Agreement. And we have moved to prohibit the Department of Interior from issuing a lease for development of production of oil or natural gas off the coast of the Ringland. We are working on legislation to develop alternative energy sources like offshore wind technology to protect the Arctic National Wildlife Refuge by repealing a corporation that was included in the Republican tax plan that permitted oil and gas drilling on the Arctic coastal plain. And in a bipartisan vote last January, we permanently reauthorized the Land and Water Conservation Fund that included over a million additional acres of wilderness for preservation. It's just beginning. We know what is at stake, and we know that climate change is the defining issue of our time, and it requires bold, urgent action to transform our economy, to transform our energy and our electrical grid in a thoughtful and inclusive way. And that's why I am so proud to be an original co-sponsor of the Green New Deal. Nothing happens by accident, and it all starts with you. And I know that much of what you watch happening in D.C. seems so crazy, out of control, hard to actually influence, but you do. And never forget the power of your voice, the power of your vote at the ballot box to change the course, and we have to change course on this issue. And the Green New Deal is about renewable energy. It is about upgrading the grid, but it's also about climate justice, empowering workers as we build a new economy, protecting our most vulnerable communities against the impacts of climate change, and ensuring that everyone has a voice and has a protective vote to determine how we move forward as a country. So in that vein, I look forward to your questions tonight. I always learn far more from you than I, in these town halls, than I can. I'm just so grateful for your knowledge and your interest and your curiosity and what you bring to these communities. But I really am pleased tonight to introduce our Senator, Senator Ed Markey. Four seconds. Ed Markey has been the national leader on clean energy, on climate change, and the environment, whether it was authoring the Appliance Sufficiency Act, passing fuel economy standards to the Waxman-Markey Bill, which is the only comprehensive climate change bill to ever pass a chamber of Congress. Ed is a true champion. It was on the top of the agenda for Congress. It was on the top of Ed Markey's agenda. And now he's teamed up with a freshman, you may have heard of her, Alexandra Acasio Cortez. The Green New Deal Resolution harnessing the energy of you, of the grassroots movement, to lead our fight in the halls of Congress. So it is my pleasure to welcome to the stage the man who taught us there are no emergency rooms for sick planets, my friend, Senator Ed Markey.
Thank you all so much for being here, and thank you to Catherine Clark, already a superstar on the floor of the United States. And a leader not just here, but all across our country. When she speaks, people listen. So it's my great honor to be here tonight with our great, great leader. And to Mayor Yvonne Spicer, thank you so much for being this incredible, incredible wife of the people on Sunday, of all this men, actually, rallying in front of Boston City Hall. She is representing you everywhere, not just here in Framingham, but she's a voice in our nation, God in safety. To District Attorney Mary Ann Ryan, thank you. You are the leader in the country on ensuring that we treat opioid addiction, we don't imprison, that we change the dynamics of smoking, and we are doing it. Congressman Gentile, thank you for your incredible leadership up in the State House. To Maria Robinson, I remember when the microphone wasn't working, that the right person to have it is someone who has a PhD in chemical engineering, so thank you. I have no doubt that it will hopefully be fixed. And to Senator Becca Roush, thank you for being here. Thank you for your leadership up in the State House. To State Senator J.B. Eldridge, a leader on climate change, on the day that you joined the State Senate. To Representative Danielle Dragwah, my friend, a warrior every single day on the floor of the Massachusetts State Legislature, standing shoulder to shoulder with Carolyn Dykema. Carolyn is an incredible warrior as well, and Representative David Linsky, such a force in the state. Because we have to be the leaders. We have Framingham City Councilors George King and Margaret Shepherd, who are here, Framingham School Committee, Adam Freudberg, Gloria Pascal, Evelyn Hugo, Richard Finley, Ashton Selectman, Rob Shearer, and Senator Karen Zilka is traveling, but she wanted to be here, and her staff is representing her. So, and by the way, can we just, once again, reflect upon the fact that when the President tries to zero out the national endowments for the arts, that it's people like Ana Santos who sang the national anthem, which is the reason why we have to give more funding to it. So thank you to Congresswoman Dr. 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 So thank you all so much for being here, and thank you for your leadership on climate change, on clean energy in our country. And thank you for making Massachusetts the leader on this issue. But I will say this. But I will say this, reflecting back on the mayor and I on Sunday. I was in Worcester yesterday on a long-standing action rally there as well. Yet right now, I should not be here, as much as I want to be here with you this evening. Right now, I should be on the floor of the United States Senate in a special session to ensure that background checks and every gun sort of the United States, the Canadian assault, the GFI capacity treaty that we study in ourselves in the state, that we research on the causes of gun violence in our society, that we not allow you to buy a new strip, I don't know, new strip man, that we pass deals, meaningful guns, safety laws in our country. That is what I love. That is what I love. That we get in our exist, but not relevant anymore in our... That's where I should be. That's where I should be. We can get all of this done by Labor Day and put it on...